Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for December 11th, 2019. We were in camera and we've come back in public and we've taken a quick recess. So, the meeting is starting at 7:15 PM. This time I'd like to ask the council if we have any emergent items from any of them.
No.
No.
Seeing none, anything from administration? Deborah?
Yes, Your Worship. Could we please remove item 3.1, the delegation is unable to attend tonight?
Thank you. All right, and we're adding one too as well. Under 4.2, Epcor?
To rise and report.
To rise and report on that issue? Is that correct? Oh, all right, and we have another one as well, the bulk water. So, that would be 4.2 Epcor and 4.3 bulk water, is the tag we'll give it. So, I'm looking for a motion to confirm the agenda as amended. Counselor Sobel moved that we do that. All in favor? That motion is carried. Which brings us to item 4, confirmation of minutes, 4.1, adoption of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes for November 13th, 2019. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Corbille.
I move the council to adopt the November 13th, 2019 Committee of the Whole minutes as presented.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And the motion is carried. Which brings us to 4.2 Epcor?
No.
6.1, sorry. Do we have any unfinished business? No. Now, Epcor. Thank you, Ryan.
Perfect. Thank you, Your Worship. And we'll press F5. There we go. The hundredth time I do this, I'll learn. I'll try to make this brief, Your Worship, but this is in the matter of the renewal of our, or the signing of a new water and sanitary system contract for the provision of the distribution of water to Strathmore and the collection and processing of our sanitary wastes. So, we'll just make a very brief presentation tonight. Over the past, really two years, but especially over the past five months, council and staff have been working on developing a new agreement for water distribution, sanitary collection and processing for the town of Strathmore. Over this time, there's been about 10 different parts of that initiative, including, and I won't read the PowerPoint slide, however, you know, working with council, surveying the market, seeking legal opinion, working with PricewaterhouseCoopers to provide a value for money analysis on the service provisions within these contracts, and finally, the negotiation of a new contract with our service provider, Epcor. We're pleased to bring to council today a new agreement. It's, call it amendment to the old one, however, it is over 50% new. You'll notice the agreement itself is about hundreds, some pages of detail. It's a substantially more detailed agreement than the last one, with a lot more key performance indicators and measurements based in. We'll speak to those later. Key here is, of course, the numbers. Within this agreement is a commitment for, it's an eight-year agreement with a four-year exit clause, commitment to only CPI adjustments over that time. So, these will be based on a three-year rolling CPI out of the city of Calgary to maintain a real cost control over the next four to eight years. This was key there. The work being provided is substantially the same. Items that were previously out of scope and paid for by separate budget items are pulled into that budget. As well, Epcor has agreed to take on the basic, is part of their basic work, line locating. So, this is where someone is digging and phones Alberta, one call. Right now, town staff go out to provide that service, marking lines. This is one that's difficult for the town to provide because it requires that we pull operations staff out of the field. We like to do the schedule a week in advance, and if we get a one call on a Wednesday, then we're pulling guys out of the field Thursday and not getting work done. So, in addition to being worth about $40,000 worth of staff time, it's a substantial efficiency because we're not unexpectedly losing staff. So, this was a really good one to move to Epcor. They're better at it, their workflows are better at it to deal with this. Again, that 4% project planning fee, not to exceed 30%. So, we typically do about $1 million worth of capital works a year, in a regular year. That's upgrades to the plant, upgrades to, or upgrades or repairs on our lift stations, replacements of linear assets. So, on a 4% of that million dollars works out to $40,000. As part of this, we've capped this at $30,000 a year, in terms of what that capital project planning fee looks like, as well as a clawback clause whereby if any of the capital works go over budget, we can claw that back up to 50% to compensate the town for the budget overages. This year, you know, to provide context, probably about $800,000 worth of capital works related to utilities this year. We actually came in about $16,000 to $20,000 under budget. So, in a year like this, there would be no clawbacks, but the flip side is we came in under budget. So, that's a win. As well, a commitment from Epcor to look at local and socially responsible procurement, a commitment on their part to share their asset management data so that the town isn't duplicating work being performed by Epcor, and as well, a commitment on their part to look for grant funding, to provide functions. Council knows we want to move away from grant funding for utilities, however, where grants are available, let's take them, and where we can have really high-end professionals do the grant writing and apply for them for us, let's really take advantage of it. Yeah, no changes to the out of scope. So, this is an eight-year term with a four-year review and potential exit option for the town. So, at year four, there will be annual reports, again, to the KPIs, where council will be able to look at scoring along those 10 dimensions, as well as the other performance indicators. This will give council really good information going into the fourth year of the contract, the potential exit. It'll also give chance to course correct far earlier in the process. The previous agreement was a 20-year agreement. That was never a realistic agreement. A 20-year agreement is, with no real exit clauses, just didn't work for anyone. I think there was a lot of discomfiture on everyone's part with it. Puts the town in a strong position as well, however we want to handle the agreement going forward. And you know what? Ideally, it's a good, solid four-year agreement, and we maintain full flexibility. However, at four years, we don't want to separate, and we just keep moving on for the remaining four. Key to parts of the discussions with council were that there weren't sufficient and granular reporting coming from the contract previously. So, we've worked with Epcor to identify 10 real KPIs. There'll be a lot of information presented, however, these will sort of be the grades, call it the report card at the end of every year, to make sure that they're providing the level of service that this council and this town deserves and is paying for. So, these will be presented and discussed yearly, opportunities to course correct, and if performance isn't there, deal with it at the four-year mark. Epcor has also committed, and this was a request from this council that they've wholeheartedly committed to, is to further engage and then report that engagement with SICCA, with educational institutions, with universities, to be stronger local corporate citizens. It's my belief that, right now, Epcor is a strong local corporate citizen, however, it's not regimented, it's not reported. What's not reported doesn't happen. So, that's key, and again, helps provide council with information as to what they're doing in the community and how they're outreach some of the key partners. Finally, one of the real challenges staff faced as we began to negotiate this agreement was a, there wasn't a lot of trust, there wasn't a lot of clarity in terms of what services were being provided. So, we spoke earlier about some of the process. We went through, a number of staff, myself included, spent five thrilling days with Epcor going over every, every service provided, down to the level of hour and minute being undertaken. That's baked into the contract, and they will then report to us. You know, how many hours did we spend on clarifier maintenance? How many hours did we spend on line peaking? That will be, as well, uploaded into the town's database through City Works, so that anyone, be it Epcor, be it, you know, town internal staff, or even being town external operations staff, will know conditions of assets, what's been done on site, and, you know, anything, any flags. So, that's really trying to put everyone in a position where we all know what's going on, where we know, for example, today, Epcor is, was dealing with this earlier, today, Epcor was doing some pumping, potential to create a nice surface on a road. Better information sharing allows us then to redeploy salt trucks immediately to make sure that, yeah, it's dealt with, there's no surprises. So, that's part of the goal of this, is better information sharing, and through an up-to-the-minute data set that Ops shares, that infrastructure shares. That's part of the goal there. So, right now, it is the staff's recommendation that council direct administration to move forward with executing a new agreement with Epcor in the form attached to this report. So, that's the contract attached to this report. And just looking at through that context of the due diligence information communicated by admin through this long and exciting process. That concludes my prepared remarks. If council has any questions?
Thank you for your report, Ryan. Are there any questions from councilors?
There's no questions.
Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, Director. Your Worship, I would move that council direct administration to move forward with executing a new agreement with Epcor in the form attached to this report, and in the context of the due diligence information by administration throughout the water services renewal process. And if I might speak to the motion, Your Worship. I want to commend, first of all, the Herculean efforts by the professionals, yourself, David Lavasur, and your team, Epcor, for putting together this really mindful, judicious report that will give our community safety and oversight in eight years and possibly 12 into the future. And I'm really grateful for that. I also want to just recognize, sometimes I think it's easy to forget the sacrifices of the people that came before us. And 20 years ago, a council took an enormous risk in a very difficult economic circumstance to bring a tertiary plant to our community. They did it under enormous duress, and were able to do that. And in commending them, I also want to commend Epcor for running this service in this community for 20 years with what you have shown us was quite incredible integrity, in spite of the shortness of oversight that existed over the years. And so, having all of that come together in this report, I know, no, I don't know, I can only imagine the task it's been. And I'm hugely appreciative for what I see before us today, especially in light of the communications between our departments that will occur in providing a greater safety context for our community, but also in the communication to build an even better set of skills moving forward. And so, I'm greatly appreciative, and thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Bauer?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Ryan, for your report, and thank you for the additional information that we received in our agenda packages. I am so impressed with your commitment on this file. And I also want to also, this is such an important agreement for Strathmore, but I also want to commend Epcor as well. As Counselor Peterson said, they do have a lot of integrity. At the beginning of this process, I remember us wondering whether or not we would put this out for tender, and we were really thinking that we needed to ask Epcor, what are you currently doing for us, so that we had all, everything laid out before we started this process. And they heard you, and they were prepared, and they really went and dug and went downtown to bring a report to you. And I think that really speaks to the type of corporation that they are. And I'm very happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Peterson?
Your Worship, brought to my attention by our CAO, that if I could make a friendly amendment to the motion, to add that we also authorize the CAO, James Thackeray, and our mayor, Pat Fuel, to sign this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Any other comments or questions? Again, thank you, Ryan. Before we put this to a vote, thank you for the presentation and the work by your staff. To those watching at home, in case you feel this is happening quickly, we've had this presentation, so we're well-versed in the information that's been brought to us. So, this has been a more brief report in the public portion, but council has had this in our understanding of what's happening. So, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? And the motion is carried. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I will again take this moment to thank my staff who've worked on this, Frida, Michael, Tammy, and of course, David, has put a ton of work into this, both on the development of the contract and just on that relationship building that is so key to effective contract management and just working with partners. Taking that extra time to build strong relationships has made this such a stronger agreement. So, I will deeply thank my staff.
Thank you, Ryan. And the next item is dealing with bulk water. Mr. Tiddy, are you coming up to speak to that again, a brief presentation? Sorry to put you on the spot with some wordsmithing.
Thank you, Your Worship. The town of Strathmore has a private business operator in the town that uses significant bulk water in a vacuum truck application. The water is loaded into several vacuum trucks and is utilized both in-town and out-of-town on construction projects. The water usage conforms and aligns to the intent of the bulk water in that it is used in a manner that the water does not re-enter the town sanitary sewer system. This initiative would be business-friendly in that it would provide an opportunity for this operator to secure water during off-hours and not have his trucks wait in line at the town bulk water station. Private bulk water stations will need to come forward should this location be redeveloped at some time in the future. The town would need that opportunity. So, the recommendation is that council consider certifying and licensing private operators to provide bulk water at the bulk water rate on a pilot basis, with this licensing or certification to be renewed periodically, probably semi-annually, depending on council's wishes. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Mel. Counselor Bauer?
I'm ready to make a motion, Your Worship. That council direct administration to develop and propose a revised bulk water fee structured pilot project, and further that a proposed draft annual bylaw be presented for consideration at the December 18th, 2019, regular council meeting.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bauer. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions?
[inaudible]
Well done. All in favor? And the motion is carried. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Corbille?
I move to go to Committee of the Whole.
Thank you very much. You've all heard the motion, all in favor, and we're now in Committee of the Whole. And item 6.1 deals with Rogers Hometown Hockey update. Tracy, are you speaking to that, or is Lauren? Lauren is, okay.
Do they? Are you kind of?
Good evening, Your Worship and council. I'm here tonight to talk about the upcoming Hometown Hockey weekend. To begin, I'm going to talk about setup and takedown. Festival setup begins on December 18th, and takedown is on December 22nd, from 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM. And I'm going to give a brief overview of the weekend's events. On Saturday, December 21st, from 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM, the Downtown Strathmore Hometown Hockey kickoff party is taking place in the Strathmore Center parking lot. The event will include a free pancake breakfast, hockey skills competitions, and more. This event is being hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and the town of Strathmore. Afterwards, the Hometown Hockey Festival starts in the Strathmore Family Center parking lot at noon. The event features games, food samples, ball hockey, and more. The festival runs until 6:00 PM. Finally, on Saturday night at 7:00 PM, we are hosting the Strathmore Charity Hockey Game. The game features local emergency service organizations and female minor hockey and ringette teams. We are taking cash and food bank donations at the door. The cash donations will be divided between Jump Start and the Wheatland County Food Bank. The food donations will go to the food bank. On Sunday, December 22nd, the Hometown Hockey Festival in the Family Center parking lot runs again from noon to 9:00 PM. The event that day will feature an outdoor viewing party, which will be broadcasted on Sportsnet. In the package I handed out, there are samples of marketing and communications material that has been created for the event so far. There's also a communications breakdown of the advertising platforms that we are targeting. Two of the main promotional platforms we are using are the town website and Facebook. We are encouraging people to visit those platforms for more information. This allows us to track the amount of hits we receive on these platforms, which allows us to track the impact the event will have on our community. Finally, I'm going to review the Hometown Hockey webpage on the Strathmore website for council. Oh, perfect. That is it. Thanks. So, Comms did an awesome job creating a separate webpage for Rogers Hometown Hockey. So, on here, we've got talking about the NHL broadcast. We've linked to the Hometown Hockey page, so they can actually go there and view what the whole event with Sportsnet is. So, it talks about where they stop, all that kind of stuff. We've included the festival information, talking about where it's located, the time, date. We've created an event parking map, which will be crucial to ensure everyone knows where to park. So, we posted this on social media, it's been in the newspaper, it's going in the newspaper again, and it's on this website. Kind of talks about the rules surrounding the event, the hours, posters, talks about the chamber event, which is going to be awesome, it should be really exciting. If people want to volunteer, they can sign up here. And we are still looking for volunteers, so definitely direct people there as well. Brand ambassadors, the difference is, brand ambassadors are paid positions that Rogers hires. So, if you're looking for anyone, or if anyone's looking for any positions just for the weekend, that's a perfect spot for them. There's a few different videos featuring the mayor and Counselor Montgomery. And then, a few Twitter items. So, it's a really awesome page, and we can track people visiting it, which is ideal. So, yeah. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Counselor Bauer?
Thank you, Lauren, for your hard work. I appreciate this report, and I have a few questions, if you don't mind. Have we been able to talk to businesses in the downtown and on the highway just about staffing for this weekend? Because if we're going to get an injection of what's being reported, about $1 million into this economy, have they all been made aware that this is happening?
Your Worship, I can speak to that. The Chamber of Commerce has been a great partner in this event, and they've reached out to all the businesses. I believe they've talked to over 100 businesses about the festival, what to expect, as well as participating in like the Paint the Town Red event.
Excellent. Thank you. And do we have anything printed to be able to put some more information at our tourist information stop, which is our Dairy Queen in town, so that if people come to our town, they can pick up something and say, okay, well, these are the restaurants, these are the places that I can go?
Through Your Worship to the Chair, absolutely. I actually never thought about Dairy Queen, but that's perfect. I will go take stuff there tomorrow, for sure.
Excellent. And then, I had forwarded an email from Matt Hassan a while ago, and I was just wondering what the status is on inviting the NHL player that was born in Strathmore, Keaton Ellerby, to our town, and also Jamie McCune, the alumni, and Neil Coulter. Have they been invited to play in the alumni game?
Yeah, so through, Your Worship to the Chair, so we have reached out, we have confirmed one alumni coming, and he has reached out to his branch of other alumni as well.
Excellent. Oh, I'm excited about that.
Yeah.
And then, what about signage on Highway 1? Do we have anything on both the east and the west side directing people to the arena?
Through Your Worship to the Chair, yes. So, we are looking at a few different options. We are looking at magnetic signs, pointing people to the arena on both sides of the highway. And then, Mary Dodge has also graciously volunteered to give up, not give up, but donate really bright colored vehicles for the weekend, and we can put banners on them and direct people to the family center as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much for doing this and coming to us with all this awesome information, and I look forward to this.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, Your Worship, Lauren. Obviously, you and your group have done a lot of work. This is amazing. You've arrived at a place that looks like you're well under control. I know it's coming up quick, but there was a ton of work to do on this, I realize that. Very quickly, any idea how many volunteers you're still in need of?
Through Your Worship to the Chair, off the top of my head, I'd say probably about eight positions.
And how about paid positions? You know how many are open yet?
Maybe about six, if I estimate.
And what's the best way to apply for these positions?
So, if they go to our website, strathmore.ca, there is a link there. And then, if anyone has any questions, they can just be directed to me as well.
At your phone number?
Yeah, by phone number or email, yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Cox?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Lauren. This is great. I'm just going to ask a silly question, because I don't do well with names, but the Strathmore Center parking lot?
Through Your Worship to the Chair, yeah, it's the old co-op downtown.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's actually, yeah. That question was up a lot, so.
So, sorry. I had, yeah, so if we can just make sure that that's like maybe in brackets somewhere? Old co-op?
For sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Deputy Mayor Corbille?
Thank you, Worship. I have a couple things. But the ball-
Thank you, Worship. I have a couple of things. The ball hockey, I think you have to register. Do you not?
I believe so, yes.
And I believe that Strathmore Minor Hockey, I think, is taking them. Tristan is. My next thing was, when I looked at the expenses and stuff like that, the charity hockey game jerseys, was any of that donated?
Through Your Worship to the Chair, we were actually able to find a sponsor for those jerseys. So Murray Dodge and Strathmore Ford.
That's what I thought. That's what I was just, I figured that. And then the last thing that I actually really want to highlight is the Parade of Champions. I know that they're going for the record, and this is actually another organized by Strathmore Minor Hockey, but I believe the record is 100 teams. And I know it's not just teams. Like, we're opening it up. I've been sending emails to like the choirs, and you know, the school teams, and you know, anything and everything that would maybe want to be involved. So I know that there is a link on Strathmore Minor Hockey. I think it's Suzanne Moskell is the contact to register for that. Yeah, and it is coming up quick, and it will be a great event. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Deputy Mayor Corbiel, Counselor Bauer?
You just made me think about something. And have we thought about the cheerleaders? That we have, the cheer matrix? Are they going to be doing something with our kickoff? Awesome. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. I have no further questions from anyone. Thank you for your report, Lauren, and this could be, well, I'm pretty sure this is going to be an amazing thing for our town. Thank you. Item 6.2, Community and Social Development Quarterly Report, November 2019. Linda, welcome.
Good evening, Your Worship and Council. Sorry, I'm just trying to get my PowerPoint up here. Good evening, Your Worship and Council. Before I begin my presentation, I just want to take a minute to acknowledge and recognize my lead team members, because without them and their staff, I'm not able to come here and celebrate the great successes we have. And I also just wanted to take time to recognize and acknowledge Tammy Seben. And Tammy is the FCSs programmer and the handy bus supervisor. So one of the huge services that we offer and has been increasing is information and referral services. And between May to October, we have had 2,689 points of contact with residents. We have opened 53 individual case files, and on average, 27 of those case files, we're working with those people on a regular basis. I know in your agenda package, there's an error in there, so I'll just go through what the slide says. And so we picked the three top, the top three information referral and case management issues that people are coming to our office to see, to see us about. 22% is food security, 37% is house security, and 41% is financial security. And it's important to note that nine times out of 10, one person, those are the three priorities that they're coming to our office to get more information and support with. Wanted to highlight that we work with clients that fit the entire housing continuum. So we work with people that are homeless, that are sleeping outside, all the way to people that own their own homes, have mortgages on their homes, but they're not able to meet their financial commitments with their mortgages, and everybody and anyone in between. So it's just not one area of residence that we're seeing. We see people from the entire housing continuum come into our office, looking for a variety of supports. One of the key goals that we were, and we have been able to accomplish this last year, is the partnerships. And so our partnerships have really provided us the opportunity to improve efficiencies in all different areas, and we're really looking forward to enhancing these partnerships and developing new ones. The partnerships on the slides are the main partnerships that we've developed over the last year. We plan to continue and grow with different service providers and businesses in the community over the next year. As you're all aware, we're facing complex and challenging times with all the service and budget changes from the provincial government. But I think it's also an opportunity. We also think it's an opportunity, as leaders in our community, as council and administration, to bring together those organizations that are feeling the crunch from the service changes and the budget cutbacks. And I think we can do that by bringing them together, encouraging partnerships, encouraging collaboration, and taking a look at the impacts in our community, and who could be responsible, and how people can be developing those different opportunities to be able to enhance what we already have, to continue to provide services at the same level we have, even with reduced funding within our community. So some of the highlights of the handy bus is that there are currently seven minivans and one bus. And we're really looking at different ways to enhance efficiencies with the handy bus. And one of the ways we've done that is, we've moved the dispatcher from a different office into our FCSs office. And so it really makes sense for a lot of reasons. We're able to have more conversations about how dispatching is happening, listening to what's happening. And also, it just makes sense, because we all deal with a lot of the same clients, and so it makes more sense to kind of have all those services together in one place. And this winter, all the drivers have attended or will attend a winter driving course. And they continue to really be active in refreshing different types of training that are required. So they may already be certified in a certain type of training, but then there's also a chance to practice that training, and to share their knowledge with other drivers, and continue to learn from each other. So as you know, we've had an Indigenous liaison on staff with the town since the summer of 2018. And so as we move our Indigenous engagement forward, we're really focusing on the '94 TRC Calls to Action, and focusing on the ones that make recommendations specifically to municipalities. And we're excited to share that we are applying for the federal anti-racism grant, and we are really hopeful from the conversations that we've had with staff in this department. And as things proceed with this grant, we'll be coming back to council to hopefully celebrate a successful grant application. Yes. We don't have to worry about anything anymore. We're all good to go. Well, now, since we have a lot of money, we're going to continue to develop our Indigenous engagement plan, and we're going to build upon the council-to-council meetings that have been happening with Sichica Chief and Council. And our intent is to establish effective procedures, protocols, and strengthen our friendships with all Indigenous peoples, and to continue to have those very important conversations and build that relationship. The Hub has really enriched their community engagement process, including developing new partnerships and different program streams. And two that I wanted to highlight are the subsidies and youth nights at the sports center. I think it's really important to highlight the subsidies, because subsidies are no longer being, the money is no longer coming from taxpayer money for subsidies for people attending the hub programs. All the subsidies are being used outside from things like the United Way and the Tim Horton Smile Cookie Campaign. So we've been able to find efficiencies in that area. We've been able to increase the amount of families that were able to assist in the community that require subsidies, and we're able to use some of that money that was being used for subsidies into programming and enhancing our programs. And then the other area is the sports center programmer and the hub supervisor have been working together to host teen, drop-in teen sports night at the sports center in the New Year. So we're really looking forward to some unique opportunities with that. So our summer camps were a huge success, and we're happy to see new families accessing our programs. They were accessing our programs in the summer, and then a lot of them came back in the fall to register for a variety of programs along in the fall. And so we're really excited to be able to see just the different activities and programs we're able to facilitate throughout the summer. We offered a teen camp this summer, which saw 16 youth participate in hiking, sailing, survivor skills, and rock climbing. And it was really, really well received from all the teens that participated and the staff. And so our goal is to continue to offer that program and just enhance it over the next summer. And that's the end of my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Linda. Counselor Cox?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to go back to talk about your partnerships that you put in here. I just wanted to know if you could elaborate a little bit with respect to the partnerships. What do we partner with the City of Chestamere?
Your Worship, the City of Chestamere, we partner with on a variety of things. Professional development is a huge component. When we offer professional development, we invite them, and when they offer professional development, they invite us. And just not for staff, but for volunteers and different programs that are happening in the community. We really see it as an opportunity to be able to collaborate together and provide more services without, with being fiscally responsible, and just continuing to be able to move things forward in a positive direction.
And I noticed on your slide, the Ministerial Association was on here. It's not in our book, but I added it. And what about that partnership?
Your Worship, so the Ministerial Association is a great organization in our community that comes together. And one of the ways that we partner with the Ministerial Association is they invited us to be a part of giving back to the community. So they recognized that the churches were seeing a lot of the same people, and they recognized that the people they were seeing needed more help than the churches were able to provide for them. And so they've come together and provided some funding to be able, for us to be able to do intakes with residents for things such as food security, gas cards, maybe some miscellaneous item, personal hygiene items, that kind of thing. We just went through a whole bunch of gift cards. I don't have the stats with me. And then we went back and we reported to the Ministerial Association. And because they saw the success in what we were doing, they wanted to keep engaged, and so we've kind of started the process over again. And they've provided us approximately with another $1,000 to purchase gift cards.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Deputy Mayor Corbiel?
Thank you, Worship. Hi, Linda. Thank you very much for your report. I have actually another question in regards to partnerships. Would you, Value Drug Mart would fall into that one as well, wouldn't they, with their back-to-school campaign that they've done?
Definitely with Tools for Schools.
Tools for School, yeah.
I just highlighted half a dozen on there. There are a lot more partners that we have, but those are the ones that I wanted, but definitely, they are a huge partner with us with Tools for Schools.
Absolutely. And then I just want to highlight again for everybody, you know, like even the Tim Hortons Smile Cookie Campaign. He had said that it was 25, over $25,000 in three years that he's given back to the community. Just want to emphasize the shopping locally. Gives back. Thank you.
Thank you. That's good advice for all of us. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you. Thanks, Linda. In regards to the hub, is there a membership number that you have at present for that? Is that such a thing, or is it just, do you not keep track of any kind of regular attendance by youth?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I don't have those numbers with me this evening. Be happy to get those numbers and bring back, but we do keep the stats of the amount of individual participants over the year, and for all the different programs that we offer. So what we do is, so we have a count of if there's 100 participants, and out of 100 participants, how many are Town of Strathmore residents? How many are county residents?
Actually, I was going down another road. I'm just curious as to how many youth see the hub as a home? If that makes any more sense, or you know, that this is a place they go on a regular basis, for instance?
Your Worship, yes. Thanks for the question. I don't have, I don't have those stats with me, but yes, we do keep those stats. We even keep the stats of the amount of kids that access the hub that are coming in for miscellaneous snacks and food throughout the school day, and we'd be happy to bring all of those stats back.
I'd be interested in that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, Worship. First of all, with regards to that $5 million loan, I'm a little sad. So that anti-racism program is not just related to Indigenous racism. It's an anti-racism, a global anti-racism movement. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Thanks. The second thing that, with regards to Indigenous engagement around the '94 Calls to Action, one of the things that Sichica had brought to me recently was that, they said, Dr. Viviane Youngman is a revered academic on Sichica, and she said to me, "We don't ascribe to a Pan-Indian paradigm in Treaty VII." And what she was addressing was the blanket exercises that have been held in our community, and that they have been typically, they have brought authentic voice, but they have been primarily Cree peoples, I think Treaty VIII, Treaty VI. And so Sichica is very aware of that. And so when I explained that the reason for that is, is that these programs have come to us through AUMA funding, and that I am assuming that you're using personnel that are also directed through that process. Is that correct?
Your Worship, yes. And also, at this time, we're not aware of any trained facilitators through the program for the blanket exercise, and that's the program that we're using. And we're happy, we're working with a variety of elders and knowledge keepers out at Sichica, and we're happy if there are some people that we're not aware of that are trained.
I know seven. From Sichica, yeah.
So we would be really happy to get that information.
The Alberta Teachers Association, by the way, uses Treaty VII trainers through the Kairos exercise. There are quite a few. And then the last thing, I guess, for me, that is of huge import and concern, and I know you addressed it, but this whole idea of moving forward with your strategic plan, it is critical that it aligns with the plan that the mayor has strategically positioned this council to have with Sichica going forward. And we have to make absolutely certain that we are on the same page, and that we are never at cross purposes in moving that agenda forward. And I say that, because there is a movement in the town, and I see it in such a fullness, where PCL, our contractor for the town office, and Marigold Library, the town, it's the town itself, uh, your group are, are employing people from Sichica with mindfulness and, and, and in the spirit of this engagement that the, the council has been, uh, engaged in. So, so I think it's really critical, uh, that we do a better job keeping you informed and, and that, that we align our strategic plan together going forward. Those are all my comments, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Peterson. Any other comments from people, from councillors? Thank you very much for your presentation, Linda. And that brings us to item 6.3, Economic Development Update Report, November 2019. Thomas, you're speaking. Is Chuck coming up too?
Absolutely. I'm just going to be, uh, making a quick introduction, your worship, members of council. I'm very, very proud tonight to bring forward and in your package you have our, uh, update on our economic development activities. You know, this, this represents nine months' worth of work, a very, very concerted effort, uh, to establish an economic presence, uh, within the town. And I'm very proud of, of the initiatives that we've been able to, uh, work on and deliver this year. You'll notice in your package that we've highlighted eight programs that, that we delivered this year. And we also talk, are going to talk about four more, um, projects that we are looking forward to undertaking next year. All of these initiatives, um, are successful because of the efforts of many, many staff members, uh, within administration. And I'd really like, uh, this evening to acknowledge the efforts of Alexandra Ross because she, uh, was pivotal and critical in, uh, many of those eight projects that we were able to get landed this year. And I'd also like to now invite Chuck Proctor, or the Chuck, uh, to, to the podium to, uh, make a quick presentation.
Thanks, Thomas. Good evening, everybody. So I've got a very brief, um, presentation for you tonight, five slides or so. Here we go. Okay. Um, so the purpose of the presentation tonight is to update council on, um, Ekdev activities. Um, as Thomas said, these were over the past several months and I think for me to stand up here and to take credit for the stuff that we, we did would be inappropriate. There's many staff involved. Um, a big shout out to all those names on, on screen, namely Alexandra and Thomas, Carla Marcy, Mark, Chris, Melles, Lauren, Kathy, Harry, Justin, Erica, and Ty, um, and many more. Um, I think it was a great, um, kind of team effort on, on, on this to bring these, uh, projects forward. So these are just kind of bullet point, um, rapid-fire update points for council. I'll move quickly through them and we can discuss, um, at the end if you'd like. Um, so the summer marketing campaign, um, was partly funded through a Travel Alberta grant. Um, it was a two-month advertising campaign in the summer. We had, um, some photos on, on the back of buses, some digital pylon signs at bus stops and we had some slogans like, "A sure sign of fun ahead." Warning, you may never want to leave Strathmore and stop dream, uh, stop daydreaming, excuse me, make Strathmore your next stop. Some kind of funky colorful ads at, at the City of Calgary, um, locations, uh, locations there. Um, so we view these, um, marketing initiatives as successful. We increased some revenue downtown. Um, some businesses, um, experienced some increased revenue down there. Uh, the Stampede, Strathmore Stampede, um, had about a 20% increase, um, this summer, bringing total attendance to 38,650. We had additional volunteers and, and stuff happening with trade shows at the Stampede. Um, and we kind of picked up some other press and other bloggers a- as a result of this advertising campaign. Um, another kind of neat one is the, the Punjabi and Tagalog. Tagalog is the, um, one of the two official languages of the Philippines. Red FM Calgary radio ad, uh, so this is a two-week radio, um, advertisement. We focused on the benefits of, uh, Strathmore, our excellent schools, our housing op, uh, options, our, uh, complete community, uh, walkability, et cetera. Um, and we reached an audience of over 300,000 people with this radio ad, so I think that's great. Um, one of my favorite ones, and again, big props to Alexandra, is the video and, and photo library, phase one. Um, so we hired some models and we've got some professional, um, video and, and photography equipment and took photos of some of our best, um, town features, fieldhouse, our downtown, um, a lot of our businesses and all, a lot of the stuff that you can do in, in, in Strathmore. There's two phases to this video photo library. The first phase is, um, kind of a summer phase and then the phase two, I think council got a sneak peek, uh, today, is the winter phase of that. I just want to touch, um, briefly on how, how well this has been received. So these two videos kind of launched late November, early December. We're already at 10,000 views on these videos. We're getting some awesome feedback on Facebook. I'll just read a couple of these comments to council. Um, this is on our Facebook, um, page. We posted a video. Uh, Jason Davison says, "This is really well done. Great job." We have Vicky McQuigan saying, "Great job. Love our little town." Kerry Tedrick says, "So well done." We're getting 160-plus likes and some loves on these videos. People are very excited to share them with friends and family. And it just, it's such a professional kind of warm welcome to our town for anybody who wants to visit or a new business or someone thinking to moving to our town. Um, we have our videos up on, on Facebook and on YouTube and, um, we're just getting a great response overall. Um, to continue. Um, our promo storybook, this is, um, it was handed out at the, the CMRB tour earlier in October. It's kind of a coiled picture storybook that shows some of our facilities and is very highly visual and easy to hand out at trade shows, et cetera, et cetera. It was all made in-house and it used, um, some fantastic photos that we had. Um, and we hope to bring attention to the many amenities that we do offer in Strathmore. The economic development micro website, this is wwwstrathmore.ekdev.org. Um, it launched in late November and there's a ton of tools on there for new businesses, new residences. There's, um, like competition analysis, um, you know, available properties for sale, your zoning, your, your processes, everything, kind of a one-stop shop for anybody interested in Ekdev. Um, so that's all live and running well. Um, it's professional, modern, and it's updated quarterly. It has all of our business license listings on there, very cool tool. So Justin Rubello, my boss, he invited blogger Richard White with The Everyday Tourist. He's a Calgary blogger and a Calgary Herald article person. He wrote a fantastic article on us, um, with the headline, "Strathmore Amazing Amenities." And we actually trended on the, the Calgary Herald, um, app as a, one of the top trending articles, you know? Uh, the article was all about our amazing amenities, hundreds of kilometers of pathways, schools, hospitals, fully functional facilities, everything. I have a quote from Richard White that says, "Strathmoorians, um, love to brag. Almost everything we need is a five-minute drive away. I can't think of any community in Calgary, uh, in the Calgary region that can match Strathmore's impressive list of amenities." Um, so yeah, we got that one trending. I think that was a fantastic little initiative by, um, our group. So earlier in October, just wrapping up here, we had the CMRB tours. Um, they had a number of folks out visiting Wheatland County, Chestermere, all the people involved in the CMRB and we gave them a tour of Strathmore. We handed them out our, uh, nice little, um, storybook, picture book there and Councilor Sobel and Mayor Fuel were on the tour and I felt that it was a very kind of down-to-earth, humble tour. We, it was more of a personal tour than some of the other communities we're giving. We went inside of a business, we got a coffee, we went to the fieldhouse, went to the pool. It was just kind of a nice down-to-earth feeling. Finally, Rogers Hometown Hockey, again, big shout out to Lauren Tracy's group and our communications, uh, team and Ekdev team. It's really coming together. We've got a fantastic, um, itinerary. I, I know I'm going to be there, my, my family's going to be there. And, uh, you know, we have, I think, last time I looked, 1,000 people interested on our event on Facebook. We think that's going to be a nice, uh, economic draw for the town. I'm happy that, you know, we, we decided to do some stuff outside of the extra Rogers time slot. I think that was a fantastic idea. And, um, we're really looking forward to that and that kind of little economic boom and boom that we might see. Um, our Ekdev group is continuing to reach out to businesses this week. We, we've sent an email to all of our people who have business licenses in town and we're touching base with our champions and making it the, the best that we can. Um, okay, and just my last slide here. Thanks, everybody. So these are the four projects that Thomas, um, briefly touched on. This is the future 2020 and beyond, some of the stuff that I'm really most excited about. We want to hold a kind of a workshop with, with council in early 2020, um, discussion, uh, goals, brainstorming, some kind of Ekdev wins that we can, we can get and strive for and, and do a great job next year. The survey results from the Triage BRNE survey, some businesses indicated that they wanted to be contacted and, and met with and there's some folks who are looking to expand and business retention is super important, so we're looking forward to, to meeting with, um, those businesses on, uh, who said that they'd like to see us. Meeting with, uh, the lenders and CMHC representatives. So these are the folks who essentially give the green light to developers to do stuff in our town. And I think that, you know, a good Ekdev town planner goal would be to meet with these people, put a name to the face of, uh, you know, the other side of what happens when they approve something, approve a loan or approve, you know, a developer to go ahead. It'd be great to start strengthening those relationships and, and meet with those people. And then again, continue to strengthen relationships with our businesses, our neighbors, and more. I think, you know, um, o- on the CMRB tour in October, that we had the, the, the main guy coming out for a tour and he was surprised at how much Strathmore had for our size. He says, "How does a community have, uh, you know, a community of 14,000 have a pool, a hospital, a, a fieldhouse, all this stuff?" And it was a great quote by Mayor Fuel who said, um, you know, "Partnerships. We do everything by partnerships." And I think that's a big part of what Strathmore is, so we're looking forward to continue to strengthen those. That's all I have prepared, um, tonight, council. Thomas and I would be happy to have discussion.
I just got called Yoda. Nobody's ever called me Yoda before. That's so sad. Uh, thank you for your report, Chuck.
Thanks.
And I did have one question just before you leave this page.
Absolutely.
And then I'll ask councillors if they want to say anything. The meetings with lenders and CMHC reps, do you see that happening in an open house setting where we could possibly show some of those amazing videos you've created to them all at one time in one setting?
Uh, you know, I think that maybe an open house would be a good idea at some point, but we know that there are some, um, current challenges that we want to get in front of with certain lenders. Uh, so those will be one-on-one meetings where we'll be, I mean, I think we want to bring our materials and, and, uh, get rid of some of the fake news that's, that's out there and get the real facts and data, uh, to them. The economic development micro site is going to be a really strong tool for that. But initially it'll be, uh, one-on-one in person and then I think we could certainly have enough to a broader meeting.
Thank you for that, Thomas. It makes a lot of sense. Any questions from councillors for the one and only Chuck Proctor? Councilor Sobel.
Thank you, yeah, very quickly, and thank you, Chuck. That was a great, uh, great information.
Thank you.
Uh, much of which I did not know, uh, including, uh, the, um, the summer, uh, marketing campaign with the buses.
Yes.
So did, uh, just to clarify, did, that ran just two months?
Um, through, through the chair, your worship, yes, I think it was two months here. Um, was it July and August, Alexandra? Okay, July and August, your worship.
Thank you very much. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you and, uh, much, much appreciation and gratitude to the, the Ekdev department. Uh, so impressed with the videos. I've shared them on my mayor page. Yeah, I think, I think we're really starting to get our name out there and I think some of these events that we've been bringing here to the community, really appreciative of the Hometown Hockey Group that is having some events in our downtown because we all agree, I think, that events are what's needed in our downtown core. And I think the AIC Society is, is leading that way too, more as far as their grounds. So, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, your worship.
And that brings us to the communications strategic plan and update, which is found on page 35. Thomas, you're speaking to this.
Uh, again, your worship, members of council. Oh, sorry, the awkward silence was I thought Councilor Sobel would maybe comment on my hair. No, I'm just going to do another quick introduction. This evening we have our communications, uh, team here, uh, to give an update. And again, I'm very proud of the activities of this team. It's important to, to put in context that this is, uh, only, it's not even a two-year-old, uh, commitment and, and team. And the first, uh, I would say 12 months were really, we were in catch-up mode. As you know, uh, we were trying to, uh, get ahead of, um, communication needs, et cetera. So the first, first 12 months, we were really, really reactive. The last six months, I'd say we started to normalize. And what you're going to see here is we bring forward the communication strategy is the look ahead. We're finally getting to the point where we're going to be able to be proactive in the, uh, way we're going to communicate. You're going to see we're going to have process around how we're going to communicate. Um, this is going to be so important for us to start to get in front of some of the issues that we see that are repetitive and I know that you all hear about a lot. Um, once we get the processes in place, that'll help us be proactive in communicating about, um, service impacts that, that, uh, you know, citizens might notify or notice. So that's going to be a big part of it. So I'm going to invite Carla and Ty up and also I'd like to introduce, uh, our newest member, Jeff Person, and they have a presentation for us.
Right, let's just set us up here.
Three for the price of one.
Yeah. Oh, where do we go for our presentations? Thank you. All right. Last stop on the holiday train. All right, thank you for having us. Um, over the past two years, the Town of Strathmore's communication efforts have come leaps and bounds from where we've started. Our little department has had some really big successes. We've increased our social media following to over 5,000. We've increased our public education material to include videos and infographics and of course, our annual report. We've also developed a new website, which has been nominated for an AVA Digital Awards Honor. We're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish with our limited resources. A department of one and a half, working to meet the needs, and now three, of an organization made up of over 200 people is no easy task. The saying goes, "Rome was not built in a day." But we feel the pressures from the organization and the community to do just that. We heard that council has also made communications collaboration one of their strategic priorities. So we've brought Jeff on to help streamline our municipal building communications and to advance our strategic efforts of the communications department. We want an informed, engaged community, which works collaboratively with council and our administration. We want to build a framework that leverages our existing strengths while encouraging new opportunities in two-way commu- communicate, sorry, in two-way communication with the public and the Town of Strathmore stakeholders. We want to deliver consistent and measurable communication programs to achieve our goals.
Just going to adjust that one little bit there. Uh, so you can see here that, uh, we started with a little mini SWAT, uh, just to help us flesh out some of the, like, the major themes of our strategy. Um, and, you know, it's, it's early days for me, but I think it's, it's really clear that we do have some really solid strengths for the comms team. And number one is the, is the social media channels that we've got. You know, like, as Carla said, over 5,000, uh, an audience of over 5,000 is a great place to, to, to be in right now. The second point is, is the recent satisfaction survey. There was some really great data in that and it already shows that, that even at this point, residents are very comfortable coming to us as a source of information. It's a great place to start with. But like Thomas said, you know, what we're, where we're being held back right now is by a, a lack of formal processes and policies. We're reactive and where we really want to be and where we should be is, is getting ahead of the game. Um, and finally, we know that this is going to be a challenging year, uh, like especially externally. Um, there's a lot of regional and provincial economic and political messages that are going to be competing with our own messages. And, uh, what we see is that that's actually an opportunity for us to rally Strathmore and also to potentially demonstrate the strength of strategic communications.
So this is our communications maturity level. Um, it assesses our past, our current, and our future communications levels. Um, in the past, we've mostly relied on the skills of individuals or departments to do the role of communications, um, which can result in mixed objectives and mixed messaging. Um, but our department has worked hard to strengthen our capacity for communications in every department, um, without relying on those individuals to do communications themselves. We've already started the early stages of policy creation and by developing these policies, we can increase the consistency and raise our communications levels. Um, each step on the communications maturity level is different, but that jump from two to three is going to be really significant. Um, we're confident that in 2020, we'll be able to deliver the editorial calendar, the key performance indicators, and the toolkits needed to take us to the next level.
Thanks, Ty. So, um, we've summed our, uh, our plan here into five broad goals and, uh, they're supported by the objectives and the actions that are on the, the plan that's supplemental to, to what you've got there. Uh, our first goal here is to support and encourage an engaged and informed community. Our first goal here is to support and encourage an engaged and informed community. And, you know, right now, what we see is that we're doing one-way communications or we're doing one and done, and that's not what we want. What we want is for Strathmore to understand that their feedback is truly valued, and it's that two-way relationship that we're trying to build. And what we know is that to really engage in that, we've got to repeat our messages, and we've got to engage as many channels as are necessary to reach everybody. And we know that what the results are going to be around this, we're going to see increased attendance, we're going to see more input, and we're going to see more awareness of just the programs that the town is offering. Our second goal is that we want to reduce the risk of escalation by proactively identifying issues and responding in a timely manner. This is, like, this is critical comms here, and I think that, like, we've seen the situation for this a couple of times this year. And what we can do is we can also help set the tone more through the civility project that we've done some basic work on, and we want to be prepared with messages, not just for us, but for advocates as well. Our third goal here is to lead the town of Strathmore to a strategic level of communications. Now, this is, like, this is exactly what Ty just spoke to in his slide there, and it's about that step ladder to more strategic levels. It's really focused on three key parts, and it's going to be consistency, measurement, and standards. And if we can take those steps, then we're going to get out of this reactionary model. Fourth goal is to grow our reputation, brand, and audiences outside of Strathmore. You know, we were just talking about economic development here, and I think that that's exactly where you're going to see the strength of a strategic communications department, is that as we use our channels to grow our audiences outside of the community, then all of these tools that we're building through videos and photo libraries and stuff like that, it gets shared more outside of the community. And that's when it brings in these economic development leads and increased tourism. And our fifth goal is to support mutually beneficial, trustworthy relationships with our stakeholders. You know, and I think that I've seen all of you on social media, you know how many people are excited to be advocates for our community? And what we, where we want to help with that is that we can help build and manage those relationships so that they're more valuable for all of us. So, that's the nutshell of our strategic plan. But you've got three of us here, and we're all prepared to answer your questions, Council.
Thank you, Comms Department, for your presentation. Deputy Mayor Corbille.
Thank you, Worship. We actually just finished our, like, strategic plan or whatever. And, you know, one thing that we actually talked about was when we're advertising and we're reaching out to people, the one question that was asked to us is, "Who are you reaching out to?" And I think now that we have a little bit more direction, you know, I'd like to reach out to those who, who we want to attract to Strathmore and go for the specific audience. You know, I think that that'll be a lot more effective use of your time and everything else, and I really want to thank you for the report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Corbille. Any other comments from councilors? Counselor Bauer.
Well, I just want to say that I've really seen in the last two years us finally getting to that point where we're being proactive versus reactive. And, and I really thank you for keeping ahead of things. And sometimes when we talk about something in Council, I'll see it next, the next day, right on social media. And I love that there's quick response from all of you and that you're also attending local events, reporting and reporting back to us and the community. The only question I wonder is, one of the things early on when this whole process was being developed, I know that it was still important for us as a town to still be able to reach out to people and have that physical conversation. Are you doing everything on social media, or are there times where you're actually connecting with people either on the phone or in person?
So, I'd say for communications, that comes mostly through, number one, we can direct that conversation in private through social media, through DMs. So, that's one way that we can have those one-on-one conversations if people don't want to talk on the phone. But the second way that we do that is through our citizen communication form. And I tend to all of those forms personally. If they don't want an email response, I will call them. I talk to them. I try to be very empathetic and understand their concerns, and they've been, like, been very receptive. Every time I talk with a resident, I have never received negative feedback about them receiving a call.
And that just attests to who you are and how good you are. And I really appreciate that. No, it can't be underestimated because the power of connection is so important, and I really appreciate you going out of your way to maintain that because we are known for being a town. And I always want that to be the feeling that, that people continue to have, that we're not so big city, we can't pick up the phone and talk to someone. Thank you very much, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Peterson.
Thanks, Your Worship. I was just going to add one thing, and that's in the package that you've got in front of you on page six. We've got a page called Channel Breakdown, and it covers, like, it groups all the different ways that we can communicate in, like, you know, among our audiences. And exactly Counselor Corbille there, that we want to get as specific as we can, not just in demographics, but in channels. But, like, the one, one of the things that's the, like, the biggest chunk on there, it's called Town Operative Facilities for On-Sites, and that's exactly what you're getting at, Counselor Bauer. I think that there are a million organizations out there that would wish for the strength of onsite representation that we've got. And so, some of this onsite will be just like, like, better signage in those sites. But some of it, like, we're highlighting it there because we know that if we're, if we want to talk about certain programs, we can go to the place that the program's delivered, and we can, we can reach that audience directly. So, we're, like, we're on the same page here, and I'm really excited about that.
Counselor Peterson.
So, you addressed exactly what I was saying and further to my colleagues. After the surveys that were done in the community, and I know that communications had a role in that, and I access a demographic that is equivalent to the color of my hair, and they are not shy to express where they're at in terms of their context within this community. I've never before heard so many compliments, especially with regards to the people that were interviewed, and how validated they felt and how vital they felt to the process, and when they saw the products through our communications and through what was online, how absolutely ecstatic they were about the direction. And I just think that really speaks highly of the teams and the work that you're doing. And if we can reach those people who have been our, you know, we, I refer to them sometimes as the Senate or the official opposition, but they, they have been mighty complimentary, and I just pass that on to you with great gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Sobel.
Thank you, and appreciate the report, folks. I, you know, I have to comment on the citizen communication form. Me and Ty have a special relationship because I like those things.
I appreciate you doing that.
But, you know, more important is, is, is the effort that we're all making in trying to get people, and there's some reluctance and resistance and people going to those things because it's another form and all that, but it's a very easy form to fill out. And it's been my experience from talking to people who have filled them out, that they couldn't believe how easy and how fulfilling the, and how easy the issue was dealt with, how well the issue was dealt with. And that's what's, there's, there's an actual response, and there is communication. I mean, this is one-to-one communication. Even if you're leaving a message on my phone, I'm getting that. So, I just, I, if, I mean, everything else is really good, but I just think that the response that you guys have made and the changes to the CCF is really appreciated, and I hope it continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Much appreciation to your department. Thomas, did you want to lean in?
I just, in closing, I just want to touch bases a little bit on one of the points that Jeff made, and that is, the team has really identified this whole idea around the onsite or, you know, one of the things we're going to be doing is working, working with every one of our employees so that they're all brand ambassadors, so that they can all speak to the services. That doesn't matter who you're talking to, they're going to know what services the town offers, and that's just an expansion of one of the channels that we have. I think it's really innovative. You're going to see a lot of focus on that in the next year. And last, I just, you know, in addition to acknowledging the incredible work of this team, I want to acknowledge that this team is, and the work on communications is very much a reflection of Jennifer Swatzky and her leadership in this matter.
Thank you, Thomas. And one of the things I've appreciated too is that when you've done some of those short videos, I wish we'd have started them a little sooner, Ty. We started it with Jason Montgomery, I think, when he was deputy mayor. But you've allowed us to bring some humor into it too, which makes it a little, little easier, I think, for our public to watch. Council doesn't know this yet. I haven't had a chance to bring it up, but Ty and I have been kicking around the idea of a Christmas message from the seven of us, and we talked about possibly doing it from the fireplace at the library, maybe Christmas greetings, something like that. So, I'll be emailing you in the next couple of days, hopefully early next week. Ty, would that work? Would you be able to get it out by Christmas then?
It's great for Christmas.
Okay.
Still thinking about doing it in your pajamas?
No, no, no pajamas.
You have to wear pajamas.
Hey, hey, no, that's not what I said.
I thought you said that.
I will not be wearing any.
Would you stop saying that?
Your people are horrible. Anyway, I'll be, we'll be in touch now that you're not in the same building. We'll email or something. But councilors, be ready for some sort of a Christmas message with clothing.
To apologize to Daddy.
Thank you.
We have HR.
All right, our next, our next item is Lambert Park, and who will be speaking to this? Deborah.
Hi, thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Perry was unable to attend tonight, but he still wanted his letter to come forward to Council, and he will attend Council and speak with you if you wish.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Are there any, I guess we wouldn't have any questions. Counselor Peterson, comments?
Your Worship, I would like to make a motion.
No, we can't.
Oh, sorry, but, but we could rise and report, right?
Yep.
So, I would like to come out of in camera or out of committee of the whole, sorry?
Yeah.
Little eggnog tonight?
Stop it. At least I wear clothes.
All right, Counselor Peterson, carry on.
We have to vote, Your Worship.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Counselor Peterson.
Your Worship, I would, I would like to, first of all, ask Legislative Services if it is, if there's anything preventing us from making a motion on this matter. I know that Strathmore used to have a naming committee. I don't believe there is such a thing anymore, and so, I'm just hoping that there's no impediment to moving forward to making this motion.
Could I have one minute?
Yes.
Your Worship, may I ask Counselor Peterson a question? The letter from Mr. Perry refers to a part of Lambert Park, and so, the, just for clarification, it is, it is my understanding, it is that section of Lambert Park that they wish to rename as the station at Lam-
Yes, at Lambert Park.
At Lambert Park. It is not actually, in fact, changing anything other than designating that section of it.
I'll speak to that too.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify the intent of the letter. Thank you. And yes, if Council is agreeable to hear the motion, then you-
Thank you very much. Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, I would move that in accordance with the request from Western District Historic Society and Communities in Bloom, the Council designate the area of Lambert Park, north and west of Lakeside Views and north of the library, be designated the Station Garden of Lambert Park. And if I may speak to the motion briefly, so, there are, there's a letter that Council has received from the Chair of the Western District Historic Society, Rhonda Stockwell, and the Chair of Communities in Bloom, Rob Perry. There are two things in the letter that I'd like to bring attention to that noted in the letter. The first one says that "We do not want to diminish the name of Lambert Park as it is a significant part of Strathmore's history. It is for this reason that we are suggesting to designate only the area as part of the current park." So, they're talking about Lambert, Lambert Park takes in the area, so, from Park Lane Drive all the way to the library and between the Lakeside Views Road and Lakeside Boulevard. And so, they're only asking to designate what initially was called the Rose Garden, and they, and they would provide for that. They say further, "If this designation is approved, we would like to put a sign and a flower bed at the corner of Lakeside Boulevard and Lakeside Views, which displays the name and the significance of the area." And additionally, they have consulted extensively with Park Supervisor Donna McCollum, who has been supportive of this. I think it would be highly beneficial to the community. They have, Communities in Bloom have great plans to enhance this area with more appropriate flowers and foliage. And there already is a sign that was dedicated with our mayor and with Wheatland Historic Society and Council on that site that, that shows its role as a, as the major point at which this community was opened up by settlers at Strathmore's inception. That's all I have, Your Worship.
Thank you. So, we do have, Counselor Sobel.
Thank you. And just in addition to that, two very minor points. One is the purpose of the station part of the name is that this was very, very close to the original CPR station. So, it brings into, into account the, as Counselor Peterson was saying, our heritage and, and early beginnings. The other, the other thing I wanted just to comment on, I happened to discuss this issue with Mr. Perry yesterday, and it's incredible the amount of time and research he has done on this project. His focus is, was very, very clearly on not hurting anyone's feelings, and certainly if Council wishes, I'm sure Rob would be pleased to come and describe, but I am totally satisfied that, that his research suggests, it's clear on the fact that it would not insult anyone, and I totally support this.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Bauer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just would like to bring in how this so nicely fits with the feedback that we received from the judges from the Communities in Bloom Society. And one of the, one of the points that they raised was that we were not celebrating our past enough, and so, we needed to highlight those points where things of historical significance happen. And this is definitely one way that we can do that. I see this as being a starting point for even perhaps further enhancement of that area down the road. And I really support this. I applaud the, the work that Rob Perry has done with consultation of Rhonda Stockwell. Rob is also not only a social studies teacher, but he's a member of the Calgary Historical Society and our own Wheatland Historical Society. So, he brings a lot to this position, and, and I, and I think that this is a good move for Strathmore to, to move forward. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Bauer. Counselor Peterson.
I just, Counselor Cox points out that this did used to be right on the border of the campground as well, so, it'll be a big enhancement in that area. And in light of what, what you've said about the research that has gone into this, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to the effort that, that the whole Wheatland Historical Society and the, and the Communities in Bloom have put in, that this whole group has, has just really, really worked hard to be able to do this. And Tom, of course, has, has just brought so much to the table in terms of the history. So, really grateful to, to all of them. And I think that at some point, it would be nice for Legislative Services to invite them to come to Council to talk about, about the plan that they're, that they're going to initiate because they do have a pretty definitive plan around this. And also, it enhances the walking tour, the existing walking tour.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Bauer.
Thank you. I just have a question for administration. Is this something that with the Strathmore Commons development of that area, that we would be able to accept this, this change and use Rob Perry and Rhonda Stockwell as partners in, in laying out that area? Or has, have the plans already been finalized?
Through the chair. So, we are still working on the pathway component, and this is, this, funnily enough, I was just sending an email to my peers.
just sending an email to my peers, finding, seeing if there was some way we can incorporate this into the project, because I think it's, it's, the Community of Bloom, Communities in Bloom are a great organization, and there's ways to leverage this at little or no cost to us. And there's also potential of, of even something as crazy as the Seventy-Fifth Liberation Tulips, which are, next year is the Seventy-Fifth Anniversary of the Liberation of Holland. So, there's all kinds of things we could do, and there's little grants here and there, so, we will do our best to include it in some form or fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, James. So, I believe we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Motion is carried.
Worship, I move to go back into committee of the whole. We don't have to?
No.
Nope, got to go in camera. I'll take that motion, though.
I would move to go in, I would move to go in camera, your worship.
Thank you, you've all heard a motion to go in camera, all in favor? Counselor Peterson moved, and we're in camera at eight forty-five.